Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order for today. First item is approval of today's agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion on second to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, saying none, we'll move on, approval of payment of bills and net worths.
Move to approve.
Second.
They should be here, we'll have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side, motion carries. Approval of minutes from the May 28th and June 4th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes for May 28th and June 4th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side, motion carries. Okay, first item is a closed session on our market study preliminary results.
I would move to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion on second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side, motion carries. Okay, next item on our agenda is request approval of revision to emergency assistance plan, Rhonda. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi.
Morning.
Okay, you've all met Larry before. Larry Young is our supervisor of medical maintenance unit. So his, he and his staff are the ones that manage our emergency assistance program. And we are looking for just a small revision to our emergency assistance plan. This plan does get sent down to the State Department of Human Services as well, and they review it as well. So I don't anticipate any concerns, but just to give you a little bit of a background, our emergency assistance program is funded through primarily, 92% of the funds come from federal revenue, 8% comes from state funds. Our county gets about 1.1 million in what's called the MFPB consolidated fund, and about 180,000 of that is budgeted to our EA program. The rest of that revenue is budgeted, we earn about 130,000 of it for our staff, and then the rest is under contract with rural Minnesota SEP. And SEP works with our families who are on the MFPB cash grant program for job services in our DWP program. So we're only talking about the EA portion of this program, and what we're wanting to do is add the ability to approve childcare deposits for families that are struggling with that childcare deposit through our EA plan. And that is a legitimate piece that we could approve per the Department of Human Services. So that's really our only revision, but if you have questions about the EA plan, or Larry, if you have something to add?
Well, we're seeing a lot more deposits that are being asked for from childcare providers. I don't know if it's because people leave and they don't make their last payment or something, so it's kind of just like rental property where somebody, a childcare provider wants money in place before you go to childcare and just in case something happens. And so we find a lot of our families that obviously to be eligible for childcare, you have to have low income to be eligible. And then you're going to pay for childcare, and then you're going to be responsible for some of the care costs in childcare. And if you have two, three kids that are in childcare, some providers might ask for a deposit for each of the children. And so our goal is to try to, and it's stopped some of the families from being able to get into some of the childcare, because if I'm going to have to pay something to send my child to childcare, I'm not making, I'm barely making enough to even make me eligible for childcare, and then have to come up with this deposit at the same time. It causes quite a hindrance to the families. And so our goal is to say, out of this emergency monies, that even if it's a three-person home or whatever, we would pay the deposit for one of the children. So that would help the families, so that we would pay the deposits, so it's allowing them to be able to get a person in childcare. Because there's a lot of times where we might be able to prove that they're eligible for childcare, but then, then the next step is to say yes, then come up with this deposit money, and then they can't, and then their application denies because they never got enrolled into a childcare provider, so.
So if they get into this, and the deposit's there, what's the process for having the deposit returned?
Well, I don't believe we really have come up with.
Well, I mean.
We intis- we inti-
It's like, if I go rent a place, and I put a deposit down, it's there to protect an investment on the part of the, of the private enterprise.
And for us.
And at some point, they should get that back.
Yep. And for us, when we approve emergency assistance, for somebody to move into an apartment, I mean, if I move into an apartment and have to pay first month's rent, then that's the anticipation that when I move out, I get that back. But, and under our emergency assistance programs, we're paying deposits to get people in apartments too, but I'd never know of any time that we've gotten that money back.
Yeah.
Just to give my, now if you have one child, you can get some assistance, and you have three child, three children, excuse me, you can get assistance too. I mean, is that a fair thing there, or, I mean, I'm trying to see how much money you get, if you only have one child or three child, you still get the same amount of money, huh? Or do you give more?
The same amount of deposit, I mean.
Deposit, excuse me.
Yes, sir. I mean, the, if, if I had three children, I needed to go to daycare, and I needed to come up $900 worth of deposit, I mean, we, we went with the direction of not saying, okay, let's pay for the deposit for all three children, let's pay the deposit for one of the children. So again, if I'm having an issue getting my kids into daycare and coming up $900, maybe $300 from deposit will help so that they only have to come up to 600. We haven't used it very often yet, this is just our proposal to you guys, for us to be able to add it to policy.
So this is the 8% money that comes from the state?
Yeah, 92% of this MFPB consolidated funds is federal, and 8% is state.
So is there, does that 8% ever run out? I mean, so the county, Clay County gets so much, and then does, does it ever run out, or?
You know, our allocation has remained fairly steady. It's a formula, and so it can change slightly over time. There's a lot of county, and in fact, we've been one of those counties that have not actually utilized our full allocation. And actually, our emergency assistance approvals have gone down quite substantially as well over the last probably five years, I want to say. So I, I don't, we've been getting this, these MFPB dollars for years, so I don't, I'm not aware of anything on the horizon in terms of those being diminished. Our emergency assistance program, so for example, in, we'll go to one of our prior years, in 2012, we spent, actually 2011, we were at 211,000 we spent in emergency assistance. And last year, we spent, well, 2017, we spent 116. And last year, we spent about 87,000, and we're checking on that, because that doesn't quite seem right to us, but, so we've, we've just had less, less approvals for emergency assistance over the past year, so. We think, I think what we're seeing is, again, the, our policy does allow for myself and Larry to talk about unique circumstances. And we do, we do that when we have a family who's coming in, and whether it be a rental issue, or deposit, or, you know, the childcare, we're looking at a number of factors. If we have kids that are at risk of out of home placement because the family's going to be evicted from your apartment, and, you know, then we have deeper end services, there's times where we've talked about, you know what, this makes sense, let's approve that under our emergency assistance program. And so we would want that flexibility to continue, and it hasn't happened for a long time.
It's still a cheaper alternative.
Absolutely, absolutely. And this childcare issue is becoming more and more of a difficulty, and we want to have the opportunity to, to approve it when it makes sense, offer that the family has to come up with some of the funds. But if, in a situation where we had maybe three children, and based on our assessment, we really felt there is no way that this family could come up with a deposit for the other two kids, Larry and I would talk, and we may make a decision that it makes sense to approve it. So we'd want to have that flexibility within the plan. This is, again, it's an opportunity for us to get folks back to work and not have childcare barrier to get them started. It's not unique as well, I think there's other counties that have childcare as well as other kinds of things either, or emergency assistance.
I guess my, you know, my, my issue is, you know, when you, when you talk about the, for example, the housing assistance that comes down through the state, that, that is, that's not referred to as a deposit. That's, 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 that's assistance to make sure that they get into an affordable living situation.
Yes, that's very different than our emergency assistance.
Right. Now with, under this emergent, and again, when I, anytime I think about a deposit, so this daycare provider has these, this child coming in, and I want a deposit that's gonna, for, you know, to make sure that you don't walk away without paying your, but, what if, what if they were all up to date? That's, that's the point that I'm trying to make, at some point in time, is just, is this just a freebie for somebody?
Yeah.
That, that, I, I can understand the help in getting them in, but if the daycare provider is simply going to get the $300, and the individual family met all of their responsibilities of their daycare contract, why should the daycare provider get to keep that $300?
Well, again, I think.
And again, I'm not against it, we need all these daycare places, but, but I just.
Then I think I need to look further into the deposits part, I mean, the apartment piece of it too. I mean, separating those things, and if I move into an apartment, or a client comes into our office and applies for a deposit to move into an apartment, we, we don't have any way of saying, or, and contact the landlord and say, okay, if this person does move out, and they get a deposit, we want that money back.
Well.
We haven't, I mean.
But don't you think that, don't you think that, because if, if we gave the tenant the money for deposit to help them get in there, and the tenant leaves and gets the money back, whose money was that really?
Yeah.
Was it their, was it the tenants', or was it the county's?
That's right.
So my point, you know, so maybe we need to look at that too. I, you know, I, it's just, it's just something to, it's, it's one thing to help somebody get out of a predicament and get stable, and, and get to daycare, we want that, but nobody should be profiting off of these dollars that we're investing into this.
Yeah. I'm not aware.
That's my.
Yeah, no, it's a fair.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, it's a fair statement. I'm not aware statewide of any protocols that the county or the state has in terms of this deposit issue. However, I, you know, we'll certainly look at that, and we'll ask the state, they give good guidance, and there's quite a bit of statute language around the utilization of these funds, so we'll look at that.
If, if somebody who wasn't, who was going to a daycare provider, and the daycare provider asked them for a deposit, and they weren't getting it from Clay County, but they just got it out of their own check, and it, if, if I'm, if I'm that parent paying that deposit, and I fulfilled my contract, if it's not, you're calling it a deposit for a reason.
Yeah.
So then the deposit should come back.
Yeah. And they're vendor paid, those deposits are vendor paid directly to the providers, is that the case of the childcare?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't, I'm not opposed to this, I, I just question about, okay, once all said and done, how?
Yeah.
Who benefited from this?
Yeah, we'll sure look at that piece and, and bring some of that information back to you at a later date.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the change in the manual for childcare assistance deposit.
I will second, I will second it, but I would like to have a follow-up on, on researching the, you know, the end results of the deposit.
Okay, we have a motion on second to approve that request, any further discussion? Carry none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side, motion carries. Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
We'll move into the next one?
Community living infrastructure.
Yes, so, okay, um, let's see, we are in June, so, over a year ago, you approved submission of a grant on behalf of our nine-county region plus Wadena, so it's 10 counties including Clay, to submit, and with Clay County being the fiscal host, to submit a grant to the Department of Human Services for what's called community living infrastructure. And really, what it, what it, the funds are designed to outreach to individuals with disabilities who are homeless, unstably housed, or are living in institutions and are looking to relocate back into a community setting. So it's for folks with disabilities. So the proposal was that Clay County HRA would be the program managers, and they were going to contract with the three CAP agencies in our 10-county region, so Lakes and Prairies, Mohoobee Atwa, and West Central Minnesota Community Action. We received that grant, and as a board, you approved acceptance of that grant, it was 385, a little over 385,000 dollars for a one-year period, and that ends now June 30th this summer. So in March, we submitted per year approval, a new application to have those funds extended for the next two years. We submitted that proposal, and was awarded additional funds for that grant to continue. We were not awarded the full grant that we requested, but we were awarded a little over 392,000 dollars. So this request today is seeking your approval to accept those grant funds for the next two-year period, and we would continue to contract with Clay HRA, who in turn would contract with the CAP agencies to continue the service. So that's kind of the background.
So this grant is more than we got last year, 392, it's more?
It's actually substantially less, because it's, it's, it would appear it's only 10,000, $10,000 more, but our 385,000 was for one year, and this is for two years.
Excuse me.
So, yes, it's substantially less, however, what they're, what they're doing is, is doing a contract addendum, so they're allowing us to have 385,000 plus the 392, and they're making it a three-year contract. So we will have some carryover funds from this year that they will allow us to use into the next years. But as a result of the cut, we will be working to revise the budget, we will have to reduce.
So my, my, my question was, does the, the payouts don't exceed the grant?
No.
That's like, you know.
No, no, we are having to revise the budget, we're working with our partners to see, you know, how they want to handle the outreach workers that were hired and that kind of stuff. So we'll have to revise the budget, but absolutely, the budget will match the revenues that would be.
I'll make a motion to approve to accept the grant.
Second. Motion on a second to approve the request for the grant, any further discussion? Carry none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side, motion carries. One more thing, Rhonda.
Okay, and then I do have two signature pages for that, then I could.
I can pass them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and the last item is a request to replace a resignation. We have a case aide in our child and family service unit who is, has submitted his resignation, he's going back to school and moving out of the area, and we would like to refill his position. He is mostly involved in our children's mental health work, and some of our contracted provider work, he also does supervised visits and transportation, as well as a host of things that help support our child protection workers. So we feel really strongly that we could not manage the workload without replacing that position. We do anticipate that maybe we would have some internal interest in this, and so we would request the motion to approve any backfill. Did do a wage calculation, we will see just for this year's budget, about a $3,500 savings in the budget, you know, he was on step three in three or four, we would, even with internal movement, we would anticipate hiring the new person at that first step, so.
Move to approve with that.
Second.
Motion on a second to approve the request, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side, motion carries. Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you. Should I grab those, see?
Oh, he's got them.
Here, there.
There, oh, thank you.
Okay, next item, announcement and recognition of One Vegetable, One Community, Alicia Holgren. Yeah, come on up.
Okay.
Good morning.
Hi.
Good morning.
Um, is that okay by stand?
Sure.
Okay. My name's Alicia Holgren, and I'm one of the Clay County Master Gardeners, and I just wanted to call recognition to one of our programs that we're doing this year, which is called One Vegetable, One Community. It unites our communities by encouraging gardeners of all the levels to grow, cook, and share a featured vegetable of the year. Each community chooses their own vegetable, which this year it's carrots, and it starts community conversations about food and how communities support healthy lifestyles. So we're doing this, and this year, it's carrots, and we're doing it for the whole Clay County. Last year we did Morehead, but we're doing it for the whole county, and it's obviously an extension program. And we have support on Agassi Seeds, SNAP Ed's working on us with it, and the Northwest Regional Sustainable Development Partnerships working on it with us. And packets are available at all four libraries in Morehead, or Clay County, sorry, public schools in Morehead, and then the Wick County Health Office and Family Services Center. So I wanted to call attention to it, just because it's a good program, there's, we have packets, and then there's seeds in everyone, two, and we have different activities, all the instructions to grow them are in there, and there's seeds, and so, just trying to get people excited about gardening. And that's kind of what I wanted to present, and make you guys aware of it too, and I'd like to hand out pamphlets too, if that's okay.
Yep.
Um, let's see, we got five here at the table, and then I'll get the rest of the people later. And that's kind of all I had, I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it, I know we do a lot of different things in the county with the Master Gardener program, but this is one, kind of one that I'm working on and excited that, just talking about people about gardening, getting people to eat healthy, Rosie's been helping me do some stuff too, kind of starts with just people learning to do some things themselves and stuff like that, so.
Looks like a great program.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions for Alicia?
Well, say hello to Rosie, we don't get to see her very much.
Yes, I invited her, and I hope Ben came, so, I think I need one more then, somebody must have knocked out one over here. Frank.
Oh, yeah.
You sure you don't want one?
Bring it on, I was just going to give her one, I didn't want her to left off.
Okay. One or two over here.
And, and then while you're here as a master gardener, I, you know, I, the work that you master gardeners have done around this campus is really, really nice, I don't know if that's been your area at all, but.
Yeah, no, I have work done, and I know Jenny had mentioned that, but Jenny's not here today. She had recognition, I was like, okay, well, fine, but yeah, me and Lynn Flanders, we're just working on the LEC, and then the jail part, which it won't be done, we're installing that, and of course, then I take care of the courthouse, but Lynn down there.
Yeah, well, that's, thank you.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
So just kind of this common recognition of the one vegetable, and get people excited about gardening, I hope you plant some carrot seeds, there is a contest at the Clay County Fair for the largest carrot in Clay County. So we hope we have some entries from this room. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything you want to add?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, next item, request to fill vacancy for full-time correctional officer. Justin, good morning.
Good morning. So we had a, another resignation come up, her last day will be the 27th of June, she's leaving for a position with Federal Probation Office in Bismarck. So this is a DOC mandated position with our staffing plan, it's in our, our budget for the year. There is a cost savings calculation that was done by HR of just about $6,200 for the year, which will probably actually be a little more, she plans to use some more of her vacation before she leaves here, so, to be a little bit higher of a savings, but.
We're not correctional officers, I mean, since our jail population is down somewhat, do we still need as many correctional officers on all the time, or?
So our population has gone down, it is starting to go back up, and we are seeing an increase over the last couple of weeks. Right now, we're averaging somewhere between 120 to 130 now.
Okay.
And I anticipate that's going to continue to go up, we are going into our typical busy season.
Last year, weren't we, when we brought them all in, weren't we at 160 or 170?
We were probably somewhere between 140 to 150.
Oh, okay. That's the highest that has been.
Yeah, 154, I think is the highest we've ever hit, and I think that was probably coming up in the next month or two, about a year ago, so, it, you know, pushing into late summer, early fall is, is our typical busy, busier time. You know, right now is pretty busy, we put a lot of staff vacations on hold last year moving into the facility, so a lot of those staff have held off their vacations until this summer, and so we're trying to accommodate those staff as much as possible. We had a, probably about a three-month span where, where we kind of put the halt to all vacations, just because the, the date moving into the facility kept moving, and so we kept having to plan for that and make sure that all of our staff were trained, so we're trying to get caught up on that and get our staff some time off.
120 you're talking about, does that include persons you bring in from other counties?
Yeah, we, we are housing a few for the US Marshals right now, we are housing a few worker lease minimum security people, and we are looking at, Julie and the sheriff met with the Department of Corrections probably two or three weeks ago, and we are looking at starting to house with the Department of Corrections, and we're still in talks, but it is something that we're open to, and would like to, to do to utilize our empty bed space.
Move to approve request. Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the request, any further discussion? Carry none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same side, motion carries, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Darren, got an update on policy to reflect the changes in the law on fleet usage. Georgia and Darren, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I just kind of panicked there, because I was looking at the agenda, and I thought, oh crap, I'm on the agenda, I didn't have anything ready, so, but thankfully, Georgia brought some of the information. The policy is, we're looking at is in August of this year, August 1st, I believe it is, the legislation passed the law that you're not going to be able to use your cell phones and stuff while driving, and there's some stipulations of it can only be voice activated, and I think you can only push the button once to answer, and that type of thing. And so what we thought it was important to add that to our fleet vehicle policy that we have, and so we had a couple of meetings on this, I believe, and we were kind of trying to figure out what we need to do, should do, and I think we came up to the, to the fact that we really didn't have to change the policy too much, because it basically says that if you're driving a county vehicle, you have to obey, obey all traffic laws anyway, and if that becomes a traffic law, then you'll be obeying that. But under the additional information under safety, we added a But under the additional information under safety, we added a text that basically says absolutely no texting while driving the fleet vehicle. Employees are encouraged to pull off the roadway to utilize their electronic devices. State law allows hands-free cellphone operations while traveling. Fines for failure to use a cellphone, hands-free will be responsibility of the individual charged. Failure to comply with the law could substantially affect the decision in a working, working company case. So when we met, we thought, and I can't even remember who was in that meeting, I think Steve and Mark Sloan, myself and Georgia, I can't remember anybody else, was it or not? But, so what we thought was if, if nothing else, we should probably provide at least holders, and Georgia has a sample of that holder, to put in the county fleet vehicles. Because I know, I, I know when I'm driving, I have my phone down on the seat or, you know, so. And with this, at least they can at least put their phone in, because I know a lot of people use them for
How do you do it?
Navigation, you know, you can still use it for navigation and that type of thing.
It can either go in this way, if you have a smaller case like this, or you can pull these out and it can go in the opposite one, see if I can do the demonstration, like this way for like a GPS.
Van away, yeah.
Yep.
The demo. So I think we looked at several different types of holders, and we thought that that one would probably be the best. We don't want them disappearing from the cars, so they can actually be stuck on the dashboard.
The other way, right.
Right.
And so all we're doing today is looking for approval to make that change to the policy for the, for the fleet vehicles. I think Georgia is in the process of buying thirteen, thirteen of them.
We were gonna put one in each vehicle, and then we're gonna open it up to the other departments that have vehicles if they wanted to. Some departments, I think, already have some, something similar to that, but we'd be...
I believe they, they're about, what, fifteen bucks?
Right around there, yep.
I have a question, when you say employees are encouraged to pull off the roadway, shouldn't we say employees have to pull off the roadway, they're on a text?
Well, I think if they're using it the way the new law describes, they can still answer the phone and talk via speakerphone and microphone. Now, if they're texting, they shouldn't even be doing that.
Right.
So if they're texting, yes, they should definitely be pulling off the road.
Some of our older fleets, they're not able to, but the newer ones, if they sync their phone with the vehicle, then it's hands-free that they can talk.
Still push one button.
Yep.
Yeah.
Text or talk and things like that. They'd have to sync their phone.
If they are looking for an address or something like that, yeah, you would definitely want them pulling off the road to input an address that they're going to using their GPS or whatever, so.
One of the board's wishes?
On, on terms of the policy, um... I would, I would approve of the text change in the fleet usage policy.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Very none.
One question, I mean, who's gonna, other than being stopped or something like that, I mean, we're, there's no way to...
Enforce it.
Force it, is there?
Unless you get stopped, and then it's the responsibility of the individual.
Okay.
Clay County will be responsible for that.
Okay.
I would hope to see if somebody, if we see somebody doing it, we could probably remind them of the policy, but...
Well, you're, you'd be violating the policy.
Right, and I, I pass Clay County vehicles going home and, you know.
Okay, I mean, is there, I realize that if it gets stopped by the law, then there's a fine or whatever the case may be, but is there anything that Clay County does? I mean, if an employee gets stopped, do we do anything? I mean, this, this doesn't say we're gonna do anything about it.
No, it's not a guarantee we even need to know about it.
Yeah, it probably wouldn't even know about it unless it comes back to us for one reason or another. I mean, let's say that the vehicle was in an accident and they determined that the person was texting while it was dri, while they were driving, and that would come back to us
Okay.
Through our insurance company.
Right.
Any further discussion? Very none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
In terms of that, you just, well, it's within your budget, whatever.
Dave, come on up.
You need to choose everything you like.
Next item, request to fill vacancy for full-time engineering technician, good morning, Dave.
Our rash of retirees is still continuing. We've got our, probably one of the longest, if not the longest employee of the Highway Department is looking at retiring towards the end of July, so we'd like to get on the advertising train and see if we can't get a good qualified candidate. The way we've done it in the past is we've advertised for both a senior engineering tech and engineering tech. And that way, you know, if you advertise for one and don't get anybody, it's really hard to get a senior tech, it's almost impossible, but you never know. So the, the idea was advertise for both, the way we did when our bitumenist inspector retired, the same thing. And that way, we could kind of take a look at both areas. If you, you know, if you can get someone that hasn't been in the field all that long, somewhat fresh out of school and train them, I guess that's what we've been seeing mostly, so.
Board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request, any further discussion? Very none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries, there you go, thanks, Dave. Community report, Jim.
On Tuesday the fourth, we had a highway tracking meeting and we discussed the retiring of one of our senior, what Dave just talked about. We got a little bit of an update on the Glendon Construction Project and the Fifteenth Avenue North Construction Project. And, you know, we have planned for the visit for our five-year plan with TOUR, that's coming up. And I think it's June twentieth. Then on the fifth of June, I went to St. Paul to, representing the diversion authority, to meet with the DNR, the Army Corps, and Buffalo Red. This was a, this was a meeting that was established by the Buffalo Red Watershed District in conversations with the DNR regarding Condition Twenty-two, which has to do with property rights and acquisitions for the diversion project. So there was a lot of discussion there, and there were some suggestions that we made to the DNR about how they interpret that Condition Number Twenty-two. And so we're hopeful that, that we can come to some sort of agreement on that would be really beneficial to the Buffalo Red. And we see it as a benefit from our standpoint as a diversion authority. And the Corps really didn't have any major concerns with it, so that's in the process, and I'll talk a little bit based on last night's meeting, but on the sixth was the, no, that was, that was canceled. Then on Monday the tenth, we started off with our correctional and juvenile detention meetings. The jail now is having some issues with the plumbing with the toilets. They're having to replace some parts, and I guess it was determined that it was inadequate type of a seal that wears out based on the water type that we have. And so it, it's still under warranty, and so we're looking at going to a different brand and it's referred to as Royal, and so I, so I basically said, well, we want to go with the Royal Flush then.
Was that concerned the LEC too?
Um, I, I, I don't, I don't know that it's, is a significant problem there. I think they're gonna research that, and we're also looking to make sure it doesn't go on at the juvenile center. But I, you know, when you have a twenty-four-seven operation in a, in a, you know, in a correctional facility with constant use, there's, that's far different, I think, to the... But I think you're right, and I think that that is being looked at in all the facilities to... And then the, then we did have the juvenile detention, and, you know, the focus continues to be on, on, you know, I think that, and maybe, maybe Steve can give a little, on his report, there's some really concerns about timing of things going on here in the next six weeks that are, how they, and I think there's gotta be some, a little bit of give on the part of our, our staff and all this stuff, but Steve can explain that. And then we continue to monitor the, you know, the issues in regards to contingencies. And, you know, so far, we haven't had any major surprises lately, but we are still targeting to be short on the contingency. Then last night, I did attend the Buffalo Red River Watershed District and, oh, yesterday, excuse me, yesterday morning, we had our Division Authority Chair's Executive Committee meeting, and we primarily went over what had happened in St. Paul and some other things coming up. And then last night, the Buffalo Red meeting, we, we gave a presentation to them on suggested language interpretations that we're hopeful that the DNR would sign off on, that deals with these mitigation issues related to land acquisitions and what can and can't be built within the operating pool and the maximum pool, it gets kind of technical. The result of that was, I think the Buffalo Red was very pleased with what we were proposing. So they're, they're trying to meet to go over that, they have to, they have to act on our permit by June twenty-eighth. And so we'll see what, what happens. So they're doing a lot of things in the meantime, and they are going, they did say they're gonna meet with their attorneys regarding the contested case and whether or not that's gonna move forward. So there's a lot of things going on with the Buffalo Red over the next couple of weeks. Lastly, I did, I did attend the PIC meeting this morning, and that was all, almost all of it was in regard to what we talked about today, in our market study. And then there was a little bit of a discussion regarding retirement issues with para, and so that, that concludes my report.
Frank?
Hey, Tuesday, two, excuse me, highway tracking, which Commissioner Campbell's already discussed. Tuesday afternoon, had a meeting with the YAMCO, excuse me, Historical Society, they're discussing possible rent increases or something like that, that we haven't got a notice yet, but we're just preparing for that. Wednesday, Ice Cream Social at Glendon, Saturday, the parade at Holly. Last night, I went to Cromwell Township, and I've got a couple of discussions there with the Buffalo Red that did some assessment there that they're not quite satisfied with, so, wanna check that out, and other than that, that was my, that's all I have.
On Wednesday, June fifth, I attended the City of Morehead Planning Commission meeting, and we had a couple of public hearings. And one was to approve a variance for a slightly larger garage in the City of Morehead over in the Brookdale area. And then we had a public hearing, a vacation of easements in the Prairie Meadow Sixth Edition for utility easements. They're going from single-family homes to twin homes there, and they need some additional space for utility. And then there was a request by Key Contracting along Twentieth, Twenty-Eighth Avenue North in Morehead, where the Old Rifle Range was located, they had about a two and three-quarter inch, or two and three-quarter acre property that Key Contracting wants to have rezoned to heavy industrial, which would open the gates to pile aggregate there. And there were some questions about, it's right adjacent to Snakey Creek, and if the banks are somewhat elastic, then there could be a problem with soil sliding into that Snakey Creek. And so they were going to consult, and they retabled the motion and, and the request for the next meeting in hopes to get some information from Key Contracting, they were not present at, at the meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I had the jail and the construction meetings yesterday also, and for the detention center, Ken reported on that. And had PIC meeting, and we had lengthy discussions on the market study this morning, and that was it for me, Steve.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I attended the highway tracking that's been addressed, spent much of the fifth working on the twenty-twenty bet budget planning. On the sixth, participated in the Strive for Excellence meeting. Again, we focused on the recruitment retention, looking for additional members, and I think looking at some tangible items that, that the committee can, can look at to move forward in that issue. We had county management that morning, we updated the department heads in the market study, had discussions on the twenty-twenty budget and, and the hands-free, one-touch cellphone policy that was addressed this morning. On the seventh, had department head evaluation. On the tenth, we had the diversion chair coordinator meeting, which Commissioner Campbell's talked about. We had the owners' meetings for the juvenile center and, and the corrections facility. Just to touch on the juvenile center, there's, they're getting to the end of Phase Two of the facility expansion, and they're hoping that there will be a little bit further on a portion of the classrooms. And they, they're, they're not going to potentially meet that deadline of, of the beginning of July, of where they're looking at. So they're looking at different opportunities to hold their classes, and a couple other different things that move forward. I also, that day, I ran into Scott Fettig prior to our owners' meeting. We had some discussions last week at board, I talked about that he would be presenting a master planning contract of sorts for our, for our interpretation. I identified that at the time, I was looking at about a fifty thousand dollar price tag. The contract that ended up coming in, or proposed contract, came in right around thirty-nine six. I did spend some time speaking with each of you individually this, this week, or this past week. And he is, would be open to come up to the facility, or come up to the board to talk about it in about a month. And so we'll look at, look for that in future, future meetings. One of the things he did encourage us from our perspective as, as we prepare, is looking at identifying a committee of how we're gonna address and what the board's scope would be for that. I know we don't have a couple of commissioners here today, so it's probably better discussion for another day, but that, that would be something that we could work on in the meantime. Just a couple of Commissioner portfolio discussions at the board last week. There's, we, we had Janelle Chaney from the Minnesota Department of Corrections talk about our criminal justice advisory board. The chair had indicated at one point he had attended those meetings, and so we, I, we went back and did some, did some looking. And we did, we did have, we did have a criminal justice advisory board at one point. Janelle has not run that for a number of years, and so we had spoke about adding that to the portfolio, having both a primary and an alternate, and so the chair had indicated that between himself and Frank, Mr. Gross, that would be something that we'd be open to.
I would, I would move that with, as a, with Frank and, or with the Commissioner Wayland and Gross.
Do I have a second? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
And then the second piece was, is we've been having some discussion at the board level about the joint powers. The, the city and the, and the school district was hoping, looking to combine the joint powers and the joint facilities meetings. It sounds like there's been a number of discussions on the commissioner level. And there's an agreement that as long as the joint facilities meeting would be standard agenda... agenda item on the, in the joint powers, uh, group, that they would be, we would be willing on the county to combine those. Now, commissioner, have any other comments on that? Uh, but we would be, in, in, if, in moving that change, we would be, uh, looking at Commissioner Mojo would, would be removed from her portfolio for the.
Well, it'd have been removed from mine, too.
Oh, yeah, nearest, yes, correct.
Because it was, we were both on the facilities task.
Facilities, yes.
It'd be removed from both of ours.
Yes. So, um, just a couple, a couple other things. Uh, Friday, we have our, our district meeting in, uh, Fergus Falls. I've provided, uh, each of commissioners an agenda for that. Um, if there's any different things, part of, uh, part of the, the tweet, continue to tweak kind of the, the county, uh, report format. If there's anything that you'd like me to cover, uh, in addition to things that we've talked about in the past, please let me know. Uh, and they do, they shifted from last year, they're going to have the legislators all in the afternoon rather than throughout the day, hopefully getting a more consistent message, an opportunity to talk with our legislatures. Um, next Tuesday, just a reminder, we have our county picnic at eleven-thirty to one. Uh, and our county board meeting is actually that, that evening at five-thirty with the, uh, Board of Appeals and Equalization at six-thirty. That concludes my report.
Kevin?
I just wanted to comment, um, this morning, I sat in, uh, on the PIC meeting because Commissioner Mojo wasn't there, and they kind of felt that it was important to have an alternate. That technically is not on my list of things, but, uh, I think in these particular cases, when we have to have an alternate, alternate will be on, I don't know how.
For per diems?
Yeah, how we deal with that, but, you know.
Well, I think we can, we just have a motion if a, if a commissioner has to fill in, uh, you know, as an alternate and somebody's not available, that, that commissioner would then be eligible for the per diem.
Yeah, but I would, I would be fine.
Have a motion to that effect.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay, and I'll, I'll second, uh, but with, with the caveat that there are, there are some, some of our committees that we're on that are established by policy that may or may not allow an alter, alternate. So, I, so it's wherever there's an alternate allowed, I think is, we'd have to make sure that, that, there, there are instances where.
Well, but even then, sometimes they, somebody goes to fill in, or they're not really an alternate, they're just a replacement, I guess, for that substitute.
But there, I think there's a, and I'd have to go back and look, but I think there's a couple of them that if the, if the actual, uh, member is not there, there's no vote.
Oh.
So.
Can't be too many.
No, there's, it's very, I, I think there might be just one or two like that.
I'm not sure, I'd have to check.
Well, you know, and I think.
It's in, in general, though, if there's somebody has to fill in, then they would be eligible for, we can add that to the list that, on the bottom of the sheets.
Should be on everybody's, that there can be an alternate to any.
Yeah.
Anything if, if.
That's basically what we're doing here.
When there is no other alternate.
Yeah, if there, if there's an assigned alternate, that would be the person. But if they're not available, then.
Right.
Anybody can serve as an alternate, so.
Okay.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, Steve, were, were we going to talk about anything about the committee for the, uh, expansion?
Uh, we could, but I was just wondering.
Two commissioners gone, we could move it next week.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, you know, I think you should, you should come up with what you think that should be.
Okay, Steve and I can talk about it this morning. Roger?